Welcome, everyone. I call the December 13th, 2022 Regular City Council Meeting to order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The City of Bothell is now providing the option of attending council meetings remotely or in person. Public comment will be allowed both in writing or verbally. Verbal comments may be taken either in person or remotely. Sign-up sheets were provided online by the City Clerk's Office via link from the Agenda. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting. If you have called in, we ask that you mute your device so as to not interfere with the meeting. If a participant fails to mute their connection and causes a disruption to the meeting, the connection will be terminated. At this point, we will take a moment to take roll call of the council members by position number. Please say "here" when the city clerk calls your name.
Councilmember Zornz?
Here.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Alderks?
Here.
Councilmember McNeil?
Here.
Councilmember Manke?
Here.
Councilmember Dodd?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra?
Here.
All present, Your Honor.
Thank you, Clerk. Next, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For all remote meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Mute your microphone when not speaking. For council attending remotely, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom when you wish to speak, and I will call on you. Speak clearly and pause frequently, and remember to mute your mic when not speaking. The first item on the agenda is meeting agenda approval. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to presentations, reports, and briefings, and public engagement opportunities. There's going to be a new Bothell Police Advisory Committee, and it's now accepting applications. Bothell Police is seeking volunteers for our new community advisory committee. Community members can apply online through Friday, December 30th at 5:00 p.m. There's a virtual open house for the Storm Water Management Action Plan, and since we love acronyms, it can also be the SMAP. You can learn about the SMAP and share your feedback about stormwater actions planned for the Lower North Creek Surface Water Management area. There's a free gift wrapping workshop, December 14th, 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Bothell Ecology Store. Over 2 million pounds of wrapping paper ends up in U.S. landfills every year. Learn how to take the waste out of wrapping. Bring a gift to wrap one by one by one or smaller, and we'll supply the materials. All right. Next up, we have a presentation that has to do with all this in here, and I am going to kick it over to City Manager Standard.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. Yeah, we -- pretty nice segue from the community outreach events of gift wrapping to some really good activity going on in our community. So I'm going to turn things over to our Chief of Police, Ken Suerlich, to introduce some guests and talk about some good work happening in Bothell.
Well, thank you, City Manager Standard, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Council members. I'd also like to welcome up here to the podium my assistant from Fire, Deputy Chief Hughes. Joining us tonight, we have some special guests, and you can come forward if you like. Special guest with a special presentation of their many weeks of hard work, and they're representatives from the Inclusion Program's Ambassador Club, from the North Shore Health and Wellness Center, which is part of the North Shore Senior Center. The Ambassador Club held a toy drive so that first responders could provide children with something soft and comforting when we're responding out and dealing with tragedies or injuries, collisions, and whatnot out in the field. The Bothell Police and Fire want to thank the Ambassador Club for their hard work, their compassion, and their commitment to serve the community. Representatives of the Ambassador Club are here tonight, and we have Robert Miller, Brandon Churchill, Jason Gregor, Eric Angelo, and Tammy Mall. The Activities Coordinator is also here with them tonight. And Robert Miller has prepared something he would like to say. So, Robert, the podium's yours.
Hi. My name is Robert. My mom and me wanted to help with these stuff animal because not many people know this, but the Bothell paramedic medics saved my life several times in 1998 and 1999. Mom tells me that 10 days before my first birthday, I had my first seizure. She was really, really scared and didn't know what was going on. She said that she called 911 and was so barely like two minutes before they got to me and helped me breathe again. Then they helped me several times before we moved and became friends with the Redmond, Bellevue, and Kirkland medics, too. Thank you to all for everything you do. We hope these animals will make other kids feel better and less scared when they go with -- help them out.
Again, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Councilmember Zornz?
Hey, Robert, Eric, and who is your other friend who's helping you? Jason, you know, your parents are here. You've done a fantastic job raising these young men, and thank you so much because these animals are going -- and stuffies are going to mean a lot to kids who are in distress. So thank you for being a part of Bothell and doing this.
Yeah, thank you so much just for seeing a need and filling it. We really, really appreciate it. You guys are a credit to the community. Thank you. It just doesn't feel like enough what you say, right? All right. Next up, we have a staff briefing, a middle housing update. City Manager?
Thanks again, Mayor, and yeah, it's kind of hard to -- we should probably just end the meeting at this point. Hard to follow that, but we'll move on. So, yeah, as we prepare to have our last meeting of the year, there's a lot of work to come in 2023 and a lot of things to look forward to, but one of the substantial topics is going to be a series of conversations about middle housing code considerations before the council, and wanted to give a little bit of a framework of what that's going to look like. So with that, I'm going to turn things over to our Community Development Director, Jason Greenspan, to lead us through the conversation. Go ahead, Jason.
Thank you, City Manager Standard, and thank you, Mayor Thompson, and members of the City Council. This is my first time addressing you since I've started with the city, so I'll still refer to my position as "new," if that's okay, at least for tonight. And so I'm here to provide a brief update to you on proposed code amendments that would expand opportunities for middle housing throughout Bothell's residential zones. So I'm just going to try to see if I can figure out how to share a screen, and I think that should do it. And here we go. Okay. Specifically, I'm going to explain where we are in the planning process and what steps we're going to take to move forward in January, February, and possibly March so that we're all prepared for future meetings. Now, when I use the term "middle housing," what does that mean? What am I referring to? Well, I think of it as a range from house-scale duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes, to cottage housing and to courtyard housing. These are the housing types that can help fill the gap, or the middle, between one-family homes and multi-story apartment buildings. Focus is placed on expanding choices and promoting good design and location. This helps support compatibility with the scale of residential and mixed-use neighborhoods. So for background, even back in 2015, the last time the city updated Imagine Bothell, our comprehensive plan, policies and actions were included to expand housing choices, even though we didn't technically use the term "middle housing." Policies such as promoting land use regulations and demonstration projects to encourage innovative housing types and development patterns with a variety of housing forms, encouraging accessory dwelling units, or EDUs, compatible with surrounding single-family development using permit streamlining and education programs. Where did I -- here we go. And promoting a mix of densities and housing types for people who work and want to live in Bothell. I think my computer just froze. Hold on. Here we go. Then our adopted housing strategy followed up in 2018 and reinforced the need for regulatory flexibility to allow residential densities, ranges, and housing types to meet community needs, with a specific focus on housing diversity in both single-family and multifamily zones, and again, ways to encourage more ADU permitting. Since 2019, we've been using grant resources for code amendments to support implementing Imagine Bothell and the housing strategy that were geared towards middle housing. For example, in February of 2021, the City Council adopted code amendments removing barriers to constructing attached and detached ADUs and permitted duplexes on corner lots throughout Bothell's residential zones. And at that time, City Council gave direction to staff to explore additional code amendments to encourage more affordable and middle housing. Staff then secured grant resources for these code amendments later in 2021. Then the City Council approved the 2022 Planning Docket, which prioritized further implementing our housing strategy through code amendments to allow housing types like duplexes, fourplexes, and cottage housing in single-family areas, and to further encourage ADUs by considering things like pre-approved plans and fee amendments. So although Bothell has experienced a lot of internal leadership and staffing changes, to say the least, over this past year, community development was able to move forward with consultant support and develop draft middle housing code amendments for consideration by both the Planning Commission and City Council. To engage the public on this topic, we featured this at eight Planning Commission meetings over the past year through a combination of study sessions, a community forum, and public hearings. Two neighborhood walking tours were also publicized, and Bothell's website has a dedicated page for middle housing to help residents better understand the project's scope. Now, as you know, Ashley Winchell and also Dave Boyd have been instrumental in the Community Development Department in maintaining this momentum during a year of organizational change, and I want to thank them for that. The draft amendments were reviewed and recommended for adoption by the Planning Commission in October of 2022, which brings us to the season. Our plan moving forward is to place code amendments to support middle housing on the City Council's docket starting in January of 2022 -- 23, getting ahead of myself. On January 17th, we're planning our first study session, and this is going to be an opportunity for the Planning Commission Chair to discuss their recommendations. Myself, Ashley, and Dave, as well as our consultants from OTAC, will be here to help summarize the detailed draft code amendments in preparation for subsequent meetings. Two weeks later, on February 7th, and in a second study session, Dave and OTAC will conduct a deeper dive into the proposed amendments with City Council and be ready to answer questions on the code's details. We then expect to move forward with a public hearing on the Middle Housing Code on February 21st, which is about one year from when the City Council prioritized this matter on our docket. Time for additional deliberation could be set aside in March if that's needed, and with that, I'm happy to take any of your questions.
Jason, I think we're going to go really easy on you. Your first go around here. I don't see any questions. How about our remote members? I don't see any hands up, but does anybody want to speak or ask questions? I guess not. All of the questions that I had were mostly around mechanics and timeline in terms of what that looks like. Have we talked about any other sort of public outreach beyond what you mentioned tonight as part of this process?
Well, we have planned for additional outreach as part of a grant with the Department of Commerce that would work with community-based organizations, working with Arch, and explaining what middle housing is to the community, getting more feedback on what makes sense from a market perspective, and help people understand and navigate the processes of someone who wishes to move forward with constructing middle housing. And in the past, we've also conducted some online surveys and had some tools available for community feedback. So there has been outreach in addition to all the Planning Commission meetings that I mentioned.
Yeah, eight Planning Commission meetings, I think you said?
Yes.
Fantastic. Councilmember Zornz?
Yeah, a real quick question. Thank you, Jason, and good to have you here in person and having the conversation here. I have one request. When we get our packet, I would love to have all written comments from people during this process so we can kind of see how the conversation went as the public was engaging. I don't need a written synopsis of the ones who did verbal, but if we could -- if those written comments are handy, that would be great to get in our agenda packet.
Sure, we can provide that.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
We had nothing, but then we had something. Thank you, Jason. The timeline is really good. It seems like it's pretty accelerated for a City Council-type thing, so that means the Planning Commission did a good job going through this. Thank you. The question I have, or the request, if it's possible, you know, there are a couple of walking tours that you mentioned, which I've been -- I've been -- I wasn't not involved. I went through those things, so I'm familiar with it. Can we have, now that there's more visibility, can we have maybe at least one, another one of those, just to show people who are interested? Now that this is going to come to council, there will be more people interested in this particular topic, so maybe we can get them on the tour as well to take a look at things.
I would love to organize that. I can work with staff to see what the logistics are in planning something like that, and be sure there is really an authentic way of engaging the community and getting people to a tour so that they can ask questions in a really open way. So I'm happy to organize that.
Because the best -- it'll be good to see what -- we talk about missing middle, and we can describe it all day long and show pictures, but until somebody -- people actually see what it looks like in an actual neighborhood, like the one right here, you know, then
Absolutely.
it'll be -- it'll be different. Thank you.
I think that's it. Thank you so much. It's fun to have you here. Welcome. All right, City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two items to bring forward on the City Manager Report tonight. One, again, in the theme of last meeting of the year, is I just wanted to note that as we wrap up, you'll see a few things on the agenda tonight that are sort of housekeeping items and a little bit beyond of closing up and some different things. One example is actually on the agenda item for discussion tonight with the Agenda Bill 22184 to look at the budget amendments, and Ted will walk us through that and have a public hearing. But there's some other routine things on consent as well, and so I just wanted to highlight again that while on consent, it doesn't mean not significant. And so I'm thankful for our IS staff who, again, keep our systems up and running, and as many of you know from your other careers as well, the importance of, once we buy software, there's a process to do that, and then it's the how do you keep it up and running and paying annual licensing and maintenance costs. So we have a couple of our key systems up for renewal at the end of the year, so you'll see that's where there's Tyler technologies around, you know, important things like our dispatch system, as well as our accounts payable, payroll, and everything else. So really thankful for the work that that represents of our staff on the back end, and we wanted to highlight that. The other thing that I just wanted to also call out is that you'll also see for consideration authorizing the City Manager to ratify an agreement between the city and our AFME local labor union. I just call this out in that it is our largest bargaining unit in the city, so again, great job and collaboration there. One of the things that makes this agreement unique, too, is that it's our most diverse range of types of jobs that we have in terms of a bargaining unit, and really, the big highlight, though, too, is just we're thankful for the collaboration with the city and our HR team and the bargaining team from the local as well, just we're really able to have a productive conversation. So I'm happy to have that one tied up for the end of the year and would recommend approval of all items on the consent calendar, as always. The next thing that I wanted to note was to revisit some direction that the council gave to staff back on November 2nd, and as you'll recall, on the projected agenda item, we had a request from the council to bring a resolution back for consideration around marriage equity and reproductive health care. And in part, that was to look to add support down at the legislative session for our state lawmakers and then also at the federal government level to take action. As staff have been looking at that sample resolution and working on it, as you probably are well aware, the Congress has actually approved federal protections for both same-sex and interracial marriage, and just today, President Biden signed the Respect for Marriage Act legislation to safeguard marriage equity. With that development, I would like to suggest the scope changed, the resolution. We really had two separate items, and with one of them, you know, the intent that we understood or the direction from the council was to highlight the importance. One of them seems like that has now been satisfied without anything further. So the request I have is to re-scope that resolution request and focus solely on reproductive health care. If you agree, the staff is prepared to bring a resolution back that would affirm a commitment to ensuring Bothell remains a welcoming, inclusive, and safe community for everyone, supports access to comprehensive reproductive health care and personal autonomy, including abortion services, as well as acknowledge the historical safety issues of illegal abortions and often disproportionate impact on people of color and on the poor. If the scope change makes sense, and you'd like us to -- either way, we'll be bringing back a resolution in the first meeting of -- first part of next year, but again, our hope would be to narrow down the scope to the one item. And with that, I'll conclude the City Manager Report.
I think your scope change makes all the sense in the world. I don't know if we need more folks on council to agree on that or not, but there's really nothing for us to ask for since they did what we were going to ask for, so thank you, Perfect. Do you have what you need?
Yeah, we'll absolutely get to work on that.
Thank you. All right. Council Committee Reports is next. We're going to get through this meeting in a hurry tonight, aren't we? Don't see anybody online. All right, the city has accepted visitor comment in writing, as well as accepted sign-up sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the City Clerk no later than 3:00 p.m. today were forwarded to all City Council members and are part of the record. City Clerk, do we have any sign-ups?
We do not. We have no written, and we've received no -- nobody in person has signed up. However, if anybody's in the audience and wishes to speak, please come forward, state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
All right. A projected agenda discussion. Oh. Perfect.
On the microphone right there.
Right here. There you go.
Yep.
Okay. Thanks. Obviously, I've done this before. I'm Peter Pearson. I'm the president of the local AFME 3845 Union of Representative Employees, and I just wanted to say, I know it's on consent tonight, and I wanted to say on behalf of the local, thank you to Matt Pruitt and the negotiating team for bargaining a fair agreement with us and doing it in a timely manner so we could get it done before the end of the year, and also wanted to thank Mayor and City Council for supporting our union members and our represented employees here at the City of Bothell and hearing our collective voice. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to projected agenda discussion. Does anybody have an item they wish to discuss? Noticing a theme tonight. Moving on to consent agenda, could I get a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda from Deputy Mayor Al Cabra and a second from Councilmember Zornz. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? All right, well, I'm going to speak to the motion. Thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate you just as well. We don't respond during public comment, so I'm not responding during public comment. And I just want to say that we really appreciate the work you do and the fact that we were able to come to this agreement. City Clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zornz?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra?
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
Fantastic. Thank you. All right. Moving on to Agenda Bill 22184, public hearing to consider approval of proposed ordinance amending the city's 2122 biennial budget. I'm going to first open the public hearing and then call on City Manager Standard.
All right. Bad timing. All right. So I am going to turn things over to our interim Deputy Finance Director, Ted Rainan, to present to council tonight some proposed changes to the last year's budget. This is a cleanup item. We've talked about in the budgeting process how it's a plan, and plans change. Ted's going to walk us through that tonight.
Thanks, City Manager, and good evening, everybody. We'll see if we can keep the pace going here. We're off to a good start. Maybe. There we go. So this is our first and only budget amendment for 2022. You may recall that we amended the budget three different times in 2021, so mostly housekeeping things, and I'll walk through them for you very quickly. In the American Rescue Plan, or the ARPA Fund, we're adding $6.6 million in revenue to reflect the money, federal money we received in 2022, just to codify that. And the Public Safety GO Bond Fund, we're adding $615,000 in both revenue and expenditures. You may recall that we issued the bonds for the fire station project in two chunks. One was in 2019, and then the second here was just recently in December of 2021. So this adds to the budget, the levy, revenue, and the bond payments associated with that second bond issuance. And then we have a couple internal service funds that need a little extra appropriation here at the end of the biennium. The equipment rental or the fleet fund saw some real cost spikes in fuel and auto parts in 2022, and the self-insurance fund saw the premiums that we paid to the WCIA for our insurance ended up significantly higher than budgeted in 2022. So we're adding both revenue and expenditures in those two funds. For the fleet fund, about $150,000, and in the self-insurance fund, $325,000. Now, both of those funds are internal service funds, so they allocate their costs to other departments and other funds. The other funds within the city that have those costs allocated to them, they all have enough budget appropriation left to absorb that additional cost, and so we don't have to unnecessarily raise the appropriation for those funds. And that's pretty much it. I'll turn it back to you for any questions.
Councilmember Dodd?
Thanks. Can you go back to the slide that was just up? The very bottom item, it says 25K for 2021 and 300K for 2022. Is that an error?
No, that's correct.
What was the -- what's the story there? That's a big jump.
I would -- is the city attorney here? The city attorney's not here. We saw a huge premium increase in 2022.
Okay. Okay.
The WCIA, and so we knew it, we found out about it early enough to budget for it going forward in '23 and '24. I don't know exactly what makes up the increase, but...
Totally appreciate the flexibility. I just, seeing that number, I'm just like, whoa.
And we can, we can follow up with some additional information about what drove the rate increase.
Okay, thank you.
But no, not a typo. Real number.
Deputy Mayor?
Related to that, and in general, when we see big jumps in, uh, things like this, does it affect, I mean, it sounds like you, you budgeted, but how, how do you close the books now on this biennial budget?
That'll happen, closing the, closing the books on the biennium, that'll happen in the first and second quarter of next year because, since sales tax comes in on a two-month lag, we won't even get December sales tax till the end of February.
Okay.
So...
And then you will, the projections we had will have to adjust, and I am assuming, just a question, I'm not challenging anything, I'm just curious about the process.
A lot of the, everything you see on this screen here was already factored into the '23, '24 budget projections.
I see.
This is just a housekeeping item to actually formally add the appropriation in a couple of those funds.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
I don't see any more questions, but I do believe we need a motion for this.
Because of the public hearing, Mayor Thompson, we need...
Yes.
Call for a public comment, which we did not receive any.
Okay.
Uh, but again, if anybody in the audience wishes to speak to this public hearing, please let us know. Come to the podium or raise your hand if you're in the audience. I'm not seeing anybody.
I was gonna say, I'm assuming that's not why Jeannie's getting up. Councilmember Manke?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
So we, uh, will vote and that will close the public hearing. Um, so we need, the, the recommended action is to adopt the proposed ordinance amending the 2122 biennial budget.
All right. Um, I propose to adopt the proposed ordinance amending the 2122 biennial budget.
Second.
All right. I have a motion on the floor to move the recommended action from councilmember Manke and a second from councilmember Dodd. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Councilmembers Zornz? No? Okay. She's just, I see. All right. City clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zornz?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra?
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
Fantastic. Thank you. All right. Moving on to Agenda Bill 22185, Consideration of an Ordinance to Better Address the Vending and Use of Mobility Devices Such as E-Scooters in Public Areas by Amending Code Language Governing the Issuance of Public Area Use Permits and Relating to the Use of City Park Property. City manager?
Thank you, mayor. And by way of background, the, as you, you've observed, there has been a pilot program in place in Bothell for a while now, allowing for mobility device rental and use, uh, in, in our municipality. Tonight, our economic development manager, Jeannie Ash, is here to present, uh, and entertain questions to council of, in consideration of an ordinance that would amend the Bothell municipal code to take us out of the pilot realm and into an ongoing program. So Jeannie, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, mayor, deputy mayor and council. So as our city manager said, um, we are here this evening to ask you to adopt an ordinance that will, um, allow staff to seamlessly shift our e-scooter pilot program to a permanent administrative process that issues public area use permits to e-scooter companies. Um, I also too want to take a few minutes of your time to provide you with an update about scooter usage in the city of Bothell. So to begin, in June of 2019, council approved a 90-day, uh, motorized foot, foot scooter pilot program, and staff issued Lime scooters a public area use permit that included an indemnifying agreement and a list of terms and conditions. Then, conditions included things like the company would inform scooter riders not to block business doorways or sidewalks, and the company would ensure equitable distribution of scooters. Those are just a few examples of the conditions. There was an initial launch of 100 scooters in the summer of 2019, and then the following winter, scooters were removed, briefly redeployed in March of 2020, and then, and, uh, removed during COVID, the COVID pandemic. In September of 2021, this past year, scooters were redeployed, and during the past year, staff reviewed the existing transportation plan and code and determined that the process of issuing public area use permits to e-scooter companies is an effective way to manage agreements between the city and multimodal companies. It is recommended that sections of Bothell's transportation and health and safety codes are amended to better address the vending of e-scooters and micro mobility devices in Bothell. And our deputy city attorney, Sepler, is here to answer your questions with regards to those ordinance changes, if you have any. So when scooters were first launched in 2019, they were quite controversial. The primary concerns were rider safety, head injuries, and scooter and vehicle collisions. Fortunately, we have had no reports of scooter accidents in the city since 2019, and the use of scooters have become quite normalized, uh, throughout the whole country. The complaints we received in 2019 were primarily about late-night riders behind apartment buildings making too much noise. They were having too much fun. The problem was resolved by Lime shutting down all scooters after 11:00 PM. And today, the complaints we have received are all about abandoned scooters, and in the past year, Lime received a total of five complaints to remove scooters. The city of Bothell launched e-scooters before Seattle did, and as a result, we've received a lot of media attention. In the summer of 19, we were, we reported about 5,000, um, scooter users per month. And this past year, the number of rides have been routinely less than 2,000, and the number of scooters deployed have been reduced from 100 to about 50, um, scooters a month. So from a staff perspective, the biggest challenge that we have is with our juicers. Juicers are freelancers that come into the community and, uh, capture scooters and recharge them and then redistribute, redistribute them in strategic places. Lime simply does not have enough juicers. And so as a result, we have, the challenge is, is that we have scooters that may sit around a little longer than we want them to, or they're not getting charged. And I received phone calls from both our very upset city attorney and our councilmember Manke with regards to not being able to ride scooters because they couldn't find one that was charged. So that is the end of my presentation. Happy to answer any questions, and of course, our deputy city attorney can provide technical support with this ordinance. Thank you.
Councilmember Zornz?
Okay, this is a little bit, I'm apologizing. This is a little bit bigger than the scope of what's here tonight. Um, this is a great program, and I think it has nowhere to go but up in more frequent of usage. Has, I guess my question is, has staff talked about ways to accommodate this long-term down the road? Like, what came, okay, I'm not a city planner, never will be, so there may be holes in this, but has there been any kind of conversation about, like, when we put bike racks up on new sidewalks, creating a platform where, um, these, uh, e-bikes and e-scooters can go and be parked? And then companies might be able to rent that space as a destination place? Has there been any discussion about how to accommodate it, these, in future growth?
I cannot answer that question. That's a public works, transportation question, and I'm not sure if there, if Aaron would like to address that or not.
Good evening, council. I would say that at this juncture, there hasn't been enough usage to, to drive that conversation, um, and we've been able to accommodate the scooters in our existing infrastructure. One of the challenges would be is if, if we do start thinking about, um, you know, painting areas and things like that, that it could end up being a, a driver on this program that makes it a little more unwieldy. Um, but, I, I mean, I think as we are working on multimodal transportation, uh, certainly keep in mind all of our different methodologies and that sort of thing. So I guess the, the short answer is, I'm not sure, but we're, we're always looking towards the future, so...
Well, well, thank you. And probably the prudent thing to do is to see who is out ahead of us in accommodating that and what works, works for them and doesn't work. So, thank you.
Councilmember Dodd?
Thank you. Um, I wanted to say to your point, councilmember Zornz, um, I recently was in Seattle for the weekend, and, which sounds silly that I had stayed in Seattle for the weekend, but, um, it was a getaway. Um, and so, um, I rode scooters through the bike lanes. So as our transportation plan evolves, which we've talked about, um, through the capital facilities plan, doing more multimodal planning, I think our scooter adoption and just having safe infrastructure to ride it on will be great, because, I mean, like, I'm not gonna take it down Bothell Highway at this point, but once it expands and has the facilities for it to be safe, awesome. Um, in case you can't tell, I'm a big scooter fan. I really appreciate that Lime now, when you park the scooter, you have to show that you parked it in a place you're supposed to park it, which is awesome. I feel like that helps with a lot of concerns. Um, and thanks for this work. I'm super excited to see this grow, so...
Councilmember Manke?
Thank you, mayor. Um, curious about the 10 cents per trip fee that the city receives. Do you have an estimate about, regarding what that amount would be based on current usage? And is that something we can use potentially for, um, creating parking spots, as councilmember Zornz suggested?
So, um, I can report that, so we need to invoice Lime for the usage, and we invoice them before October 2021 through August 2022 for 8,455 unique rides, um, which totaled to $845.50.
Okay, that's helpful to know. Are we looking at adding any additional providers? I know down in Seattle and in DC, when I've ridden them, there've been usually three or four different providers, and there's a mix of scooters and electric bicycles and other transportation modes?
Um, the way that the public area use permit is written, and the way that this ordinance is written, it does allow for, um, more than one provider to come into the community. Um, the current permit is for up to 100 scooters. Um, it is the opinion of staff that that is more than enough. They're not, we're not using 100 scooters per month as it is now. If we were to have a company come in and want to add more, it would be up to the discretion of our public works director as to whether or not that was viable for this community.
In terms of, um, making sure that they're not parked in a manner that they're not supposed to be, I know we've gotten some concerns about, you know, parked on the street, parked on the sidewalk, blocking, um, areas where families might go, seniors, seniors, um, others with devices, they need for mobility. I love the idea, and I love the fact that they have the snapshot to show where it's parked, but do we have any method of enforcement for that? Are we planning to call Lime right when we get a, a concern about that? And do they have, are they committed to coming and removing them in a timely manner?
So, um, we usually are notified in one of two ways, um, or, uh, first of all, uh, there is a, a method to contact Lime and file a complaint, and they report their complaints to us on a monthly basis. Um, the other is for them to call the front desk, and the front desk usually advises them to contact Lime directly. And sometimes I'll receive a call, but not very often. Um, and Lime is very responsive when we call and ask him to assist us. But back to the comment about not enough juicers, sometimes we don't get, um, an immediate response.
Okay. I think the, the photograph, I think, is helpful, and as long as we have a way to get ahold of them when we need to, um, I don't have a lot of concerns about it. I'm a big supporter of them. I've used them in Seattle as well, DC here. Uh, I think they're a great way to get around quickly. I have high hopes that, uh, students from the campus will use them to come downtown, and we'll get some, some mobility there, and then people will use them also to get out to, uh, the golf, the former Wayne Golf Course as soon as that transit corridor is opened up, and, um, as well from Canyon Park to downtown and downtown to Canyon Park. So look forward to, uh, to seeing this go into effect, and thank you for all the work that you've done on this.
Councilmember McNeil?
Uh, thank you, mayor. Yeah, um, I'm super excited. I've got a couple of the electric scooters at home. But I'm a little concerned about safety. Helmets not being worn. Um, I have a couple of those myself that don't like to wear their helmet, and we have to enforce it quite often, but safety first and foremost, so hopefully we can find a way to incorporate safety when, when folks are riding those, those scooters around town. Um, you spoke about $845, roughly 10 cents, 8,000, um, plus users or whatever. My question is around how much time, how much resources are we investing into this program at the city? So your resource, staff time, you know, dealing with people at the front counter, what, what does that look like for us in totality? I mean, no, 10 cents is not a lot. Uh, how much are we spending to, to manage or navigate our way through that?
Now that the program has become normalized, we're, I personally am spending maybe 30 minutes a month, and that's primarily reviewing their monthly report and then forwarding it to the city manager. Um, as I mentioned, Lime only reported five complaints this past year. Um, I can't recall dealing with any directly, so it's very minimal amount of time we spend.
Okay, so we essentially are cost recovering. We're recovering whatever costs?
So the 10 cents is, is, is standard for the industry. It's not something that the city of Bothell created. So it is standard for all communities to charge, um, companies to use their right-of-ways, and that's, was established by a national, I won't say national policy, but it was established early on in the program.
Okay. And as the, as the program grows, hopefully it grows, and we use this as other forms of transportation throughout the city, do we see, I'm, I'm specifically asking these questions because oftentimes we come up with these programs, but we don't think what it costs to run the program. And so I just want to make sure that when we make decisions on doing these types of programs, we're at least looking at that cost as well. And, and, you know, obviously FTEs are important, right? So if there's resources that we need to put on this type of thing, how do we recover those costs? It's something I'm, I'm thinking long-term.
Seeing no more comments, um, I will accept a motion. Councilmember Zornz?
I move that we adopt the ordinance amending the provisions of Title 17 BMC and Chapter 8.6 BMC to better address the vending of mobility devices in public areas and the use of mobility devices in city parks.
Second. All right. I have a motion from councilmember Zornz and a second from councilmember Manke on the floor to move the recommended action. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none. City clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zornz?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra?
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to Agenda Bill 22186, Confirmation of Appointment of Hearing Examiner and Pro-Tim Hearing Examiner. City manager?
Thank you, mayor. And that title pretty much says it all. I'm gonna, uh, introduce tonight our deputy city attorney, Robbie Sepler, who's gonna lead the presentation, uh, in consideration of both a, uh, hearing examiner and a pro-tim hearing examiner for the city. Robbie, take away.
Thank you very much. As the city manager said, my name's Robbie Sepler. I'm the deputy city attorney, and we're here to talk hearing examiner tonight. The title doesn't really hide the ball. There's three things before you tonight. The first is to consider appointing or confirming the appointment of John Galt as the city's primary hearing examiner. The second is to confirm the appointment of Sharon Rice as the city's pro-tim hearing examiner, and then to authorize the city manager to enter into contracts with both of them for the next two years. So the hearing examiner performs a very essential function to the city, uh, offering a number of quasi-judicial services. Um, he handles certain appeals of permitting decisions made by other city officials. He also is the decider on several different types of city permits. So the difference- So the difference between the two different appointments here, the primary is John Galt, and he has served as the city's Hearing Examiner since 1992 and has provided excellent services to the city since that time. He will be the first call if any, there's any need for his services or his Hearing Examiner service. In the event of his absence or unavailability, that's where the Pro Tem Hearing Examiner comes in. And Sharon Rice comes highly recommended. She is the Hearing Examiner for a number of jurisdictions throughout Washington State, notably Bellingham and Redmond and the City of Everett. I've spoken to the city attorneys in those jurisdictions, and she becomes highly recommended. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you, Robbie. Since we've been using John for 30 years, how come we only do two-year renewals? Why don't we just say 10-year renewal and then, you know? If he's the guy we're going to go with, are we going to change our minds every two years?
I don't don't recommend changing our minds every two years, but I think in the the short term, he has been Hearing Examiner for so long, it's actually difficult to pinpoint exactly when he was last officially appointed to the position. So this is to put us in line with the normal practices for jurisdictions throughout Washington State, which is to appoint for a specific term that allows the different Hearing Examiners to, you know, update their their hourly cost to correspond with cost of living and everything along those lines.
Thank you.
Councilmember Alderks.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Robbie. I think this makes a lot of sense. Having, you know, having backup is always a good idea when it's sort of an on-call gig like this, like you're describing this is. And I'm wondering, how did we go 30 years before deciding that we would get a Pro Tem? And what was the process to to determine that a Pro Tem would be a useful addition to our roster?
Thank you very much, Councilmember Alderks. So I don't know exactly in the history of the city whether or not we have ever had a Pro Tem in the last 30 years or so. The start to, or this, I guess, the train that brought me here today began with the prior Community Development Director as well as the interim Community Development Director. Thinking, just thinking about forward in the future, you know, Examiner Galt provides amazing service. He has served for a very long time, and I think it's the best practice as the city has been growing and becomes more sophisticated in its city code that we have a Pro Tem be available. So to answer your specific question, unfortunately, I don't know if we've ever had a Pro Tem in the past 30 years. We could have, but putting ourselves in the best position going forward, that's the rationale here.
Councilmembers Zornz.
Brief comment, brief question, and thank you for this. I I've had a chance to see Examiner Galt at work and thought, his impression that he made on me was a very thoughtful and very fair individual that, you know, understood that there were emotional drivers at that meeting. But I thought he handled it very even-handedly, so I was very impressed with him. And then the other thing is just a brief question of clarification. Sharon Rice served in Bellingham, Redmond, and, or serves, and what was the other city?
Bellingham, Everett, and Redmond.
Oh, Redmond, okay.
Jurisdictions as well.
Okay.
She's quite quite accomplished, like, couldn't couldn't list them all for timeliness sake.
Okay, well, it's good to have, you know, at some point, there's going to need to be a transition, and I don't know if that's going to be her, but having other people that we can work with is a great idea. So whoever thought of it, great, kudos.
I'm a little bit disappointed that nobody asked, who is John Galt? Never mind. I don't have any questions. This seems very prudent to me. And seeing as we're all done chatting, I would be happy to entertain a motion. Councilmember Dodd.
I move the recommended action.
Second.
Second.
All right, I have a motion on the floor from Councilmember Dodd, and I think a second from Councilmember Zornz to confirm the appointments of John Galt as Hearing Examiner and of Sharon Rice as Pro Tem Hearing Examiner for two-year terms and authorize the city manager to execute agreements for Hearing Examiner services with both John Galt and Sharon Rice in substantially the same form as presented. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none, city clerk.
Please say yes or no when I call your name, Councilmembers Zornz.
Yes.
Mayor Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks.
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil.
Yes.
Councilmember Manke.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra.
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you. All right, moving on to Agenda Bill 22188, Consideration of Selecting a Voting Representative for the Sound Cities Association Board Elections North.
I think we skipped over one.
Did I?
One Agenda Bill, yes, sir. 10B, Agenda Bill 22187. You could just kick it to me.
All right.
So this will be.
The consideration of approval of a two-year professional services contract
with Street Sense Consulting as the Begin at Bothell's marketing agency of record.
Yep.
With that, it is, our current agreement for marketing under the Begin at Bothell brand is coming up to an expiration. And tonight, we are joined by our Tourism Manager, Danae McGee, to present and entertain council questions on a consideration of a new professional services agreement with Street Sense. With that, I'll turn it over to Danae.
We're going to see if we can bring it up as a backup. Danae, I'm going to stop sharing your screen.
Can I go ahead now?
It's not.
Okay, there we go. Thank you for your patience. Thank you, Kyle, and good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council. I appreciate this opportunity to be here before you on behalf of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee to talk about the contract with Street Sense Consulting. So last week, Council adopted the 2324 Bionile Budget, and within that was a tourism budget that included two line items, one of which was for $200,000 for the 2023 year, and another one was for $200,000 for the 2024 year for marketing the Begin at Bothell website and and brand. And this consideration is that that contract be with Street Sense Consulting. So Bothell's Lodging Tax Advisory Committee was formed in 2021, and they advise Council on the use of hotel motel tax funds that come into the city. According to our CW, LTAC's makeup must be comprised of an elected official, and in this case, it's Councilmember Zornz. It must consist of two collectors on the tax, which would be our hotels, and it must consist of at least two recipients of the tax. So in our case, we're looking at the marketing that we do to our restaurants, our hotels, our shops, and our events. LTAC sets the marketing and spending plan for Council consideration. And also, according to our CW, expenditures from lodging tax funds are restricted to three activities: tourism marketing, and a tourist is defined as someone who lives 50 miles away or more and is seeking lodging in our community; marketing and operations of special events designed to attract tourists; and operations of tourism facilities such as a visitor center. Street Sense has been LTAC's agency of marketing record since 2018, and Council has approved contracts with them since then. The reason why LTAC has selected Street Sense as their agency of record is because of their 30 years of experience specializing in the travel, tourism, and hospitality industry. And they have a return on marketing investment, and we gain that information through the analytics on the website and through our social channels. And they also provide a conversion study that is completed upon the end of the contract for review, review to actual visitors to Bothell so we can gain more insight about them. The last conversion study that we did was for the 2029-year contract. The can, the contract with Street Sense for 2324 consists of certain objectives and tactics, which includes three posts per week through our social channels, which includes Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. And content is is generated through user-generated content, through original content, through supplied content that we receive from all of our different businesses in Bothell, shared posts, and we do have funding set aside for boosting. The contract includes one email per month to our opt-in subscribers. And there's also a re-mail which occurs a week later to those individuals who did not open their first email that they received. And I'll also be talking a little bit more in a minute here about opt-in subscribers. And then we'll also be doing one to two blogs every other week. This is an image taken of the homepage of the Begin at Bothell website, and images are created through people's experiences. So we use user-generated content to create the homepage. And these images are traded out every three months to be in alignment with the seasons. Street Sense also does updates on all of the businesses. They main, they help maintain and create the different offers such as sip and stay, and they also do updates on events. This contract also includes a guarantee for a minimum of 52,500 website visitors during the two-year contract, as well as 13,000, or 13,500 opt-in email subscribers. It also guarantees $5 million on incremental visitor spending and a $13 to $1 return on marketing investment. So our opt-in subscribers were, was quite robust back in 2019 because we had a more robust contract with Street Sense at the time. This was prior to the pandemic, and since the pandemic has occurred, we have lost quite a bit of revenue from hotel motel tax funds. So we were able to generate almost 23,000 opt-in email subscribers to our database. And because we haven't been able to continue to work toward that, we need, we need certain funds to do this, and we put a hold on it. We're now at about 17,000 opt-in subscribers. As you know, subscribers come and go, and they unsubscribe, and it's important that we continue to generate our opt-in email subscribers, which is why the new contract for the new 13,500 email subscribers is important as we continue to grow and try to build on on this subscription list. So 2022 reserve funds at the start of the year was $432,000. This is actually quite low for where we would like to be. We're, we're very pleased to see that we have received $450,000 year-to-date in our revenue. Prior to the pandemic, we were bringing in revenue at about $500,000 a year, so we're getting closer to meeting our pre-pandemic goal. We were very conservative with our expenditures, not knowing where we would be with with our revenue. And so we, we had a pretty conservative expenditure for 2022. So we're looking at an estimated ending fund balance of almost $600,000. As you know, these are restricted funds, so they do, it's like a savings account. They roll over into the next year. So when you look at the 2023 reserve fund balance, we'll start the year off with the 597. We'll be conservative. I think we'll bring in more than 450,000, but you just never know with the economy if that will increase or not, so we'll keep it at 450. We are looking to spend more money in 2023, so instead of $285,000, we're looking at $418,000. And that puts us at the end of 2023 with an ending fund balance of $629. Council adopted $474,000 for the 2024 LTAC budget, so we do have the funds needed if we, in fact, go with that amount. This concludes my presentation. Thank you so much for considering the contract with Street Sense for two years in the amount of $400,000, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Yeah, Councilmembers Zornz.
I was going to let my council members speak if they wanted to have the floor first. I just wanted to thank you for, you know, working with you. I just always appreciate the thought that you bring into this. It's sensible, but optimistic and and goes to a level of detail that that I just sit back and enjoy and soak up. And I just wanted to give props. I went and looked at the website and looked at a blog on on Huga and just thought, oh, my goodness, we really are a cozy, comfortable city. So whoever wrote that, they did a great job and did a nice job pulling in the businesses. It covered all those bases, so props to them. And I'm going to yield the floor if there's council members who would like to say anything else.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, and yes, thank you. This is awesome. It's really good to actually have, even if it's restricted funding, to have funding for this kind of thing, which is cool. It's especially cool that you have a measure called RAMI. So that's my, that's my favorite part, you know, just saying. I remember this conversation a few months ago also because we were singing, you know, that Rapper's Delight song, Hotel Motel.
That's right.
That was really cool. The question now, the question about, we've had, you mentioned that we had the contract for four years since 2018 or 2019, 2018, right? What was the other version of RAMI for the past four years? Do you have that?
That's a great question, and I'm always going to refer to you now as a return on marketing investment, so.
The dollar signs right here.
So back in, so 2018, the contract was for the development of the new website and the brand. That was quite pricey, and we were lucky that we had the reserves to do that. It was time to repurpose the brand and the website, so LTAC was quite committed to that goal in 2018. In 2019, it was time to actually market the new brand and the website, and that contract was for $318,000. And we were able to deliver 17 million impressions to the website alone. This year's contract is $208,000, and right now, as of October, we're at about 5.5 million impressions to the website. So you can see that there's quite a difference in the, you know, what, what the, those marketing funds can generate with working with an organization or a business like Street Sense. with working with an organization or a business like Street Sense. They did meet their return on marketing investment. And one of the interesting numbers, and I don't have the full number. It's somewhere between 5,000 and 6,000 people that actually took part in the conversion study that did do overnight stays in Bothell during that 2029 contracted period. So we were really seeing, you know, quite great return. But I'd have to get you some of those numbers. You know, I don't have them right off the top of my head beyond what I just mentioned in right now. But since then, we had to cut the budget so much because of the pandemic that we elected to not do a conversion study for the 2020-2021 years because we cut that, we had a contract for 245. And then when the pandemic hit, we did a supplemental contract and divided that amount by half. And then we started kind of building up again this year. And thanks also to council because of the ARPA funds that you allocated to LTAC to do the new marketing program, the Epsilon Conversant. We are at over four, we're about 3.5 million impressions to date. And that campaign began in September. So they're guaranteeing 6 million impressions by the end of the year. So we'll be looking at quite a, you know, another boost of the 5.5 this year to, you know, eight or nine by the time the year ends.
How does the impressions translate to actual dollars returned to the city?
That's a great question. The impressions are what you see every time you see the brand, every time you see. So the impressions are the unique visitors that we see to the website. So some of them convert to an actual page view. Some of them actually convert to, you know, going to the homepage and then reviewing them. One thing that we're really proud of is the quality of the website. And so we're seeing, on average, three-minute time period that people are spending on the website. So that's really good. So we're creating that mood, that experience, that reason why you should choose Bothell instead of some of our nearby competitors.
No, I understand that. It's my day job is to do this kind of stuff. So I understand that getting people in, impressions, a bunch of ads, send people to the website, get them to stay three, four minutes. But then at some point, we need to see those people actually stay in the hotels or shop and do all this stuff. It will generate, you know, money for us. Is that being measured at all, or is it only just people land on the website and check? We're done?
That's the other reason why we're so happy with the contract with Street Sense is because of the conversion study. So every time, every year, when they bring in new impressions, new faces, new opt-in subscribers, they are using a third-party agency to actually collect all the data from those individuals so that we know, and we ask them a series of questions. Did you come to Bothell? Or was, did you just, did you go to the website? Did you come to Bothell? If you came to Bothell, did you stay in paid lodging? How many nights did you stay? So we have all of that information from that 2019 conversion study.
That's cool. And we, you mentioned, how often do we do the conversion studies?
Well, normally, we would do it every year, but because the contract was cut.
Right, yeah, but moving forward, we're going to have it every year.
We are doing one for 2022. And so when the year ends, then they give a couple months for all of the individuals to convert. And then they begin doing the actual conversion study in the third quarter of the year. And then they'll return to you in the fourth quarter with the results of the conversion study.
Are we going to, related to reporting, are we going to have more frequent updates on how this contract is going, like quarterly? I was going to say monthly before. I had my notes monthly, I was like, monthly is too frequent. Maybe a quarterly, just to talk about things.
If you would like to have me return on a quarterly basis and give updates, I'd be more than happy to.
Deputy Mayor, we can talk about how to make sure that that information is being provided to council and perhaps in a...
May or may not be.
May not for presentation, but we'll do something.
I'm just saying, yeah, cool. Email subscribers. You mentioned there were, we have our 16K right now, a little over 16K. And then the counter is going to add 13K more?
13.5.
Thirty, yeah, on top of the 16K, right? So we're going to have around 30,000 subscribers. What is the, what do we expect to come out of that? Like, why are we collecting subscribers?
Well, what we're ultimately creating is a mood and a feel and a desire for you to come to Bothell. And so through the weekly posts that we do through social, the monthly e-newsletter, those are going to all of those subscribers. And so the more people that we have, the more people are actually converting to an overnight stay. The less people we have, the less people are converting to an overnight stay. So the more that we have in that opt-in subscriber list, the more opportunity there is to convert.
And they're usually, I guess, how are we getting those subscribers? Or is it too detailed now? We don't need to get into tactics? If it's too tactical, no need to answer. It's okay, I'm just curious.
It's something that Street Sense is responsible for doing, and there are funds in the budget for them to do that. So they're actually going after those individuals through paid advertising.
Oh, okay, cool. Thank you, okay.
Councilmember Dodd?
You're getting all the marketing people today. It's also my day job. So I, too, am curious how the guaranteed subscribers thing is interesting to me. And maybe that's just because I work in marketing technology, not as a marketer. But I would love to get maybe like an email with just some details from Street Sense on how they're doing that. And also, if they don't come up with those subscribers, do we get money back? Or, okay, that was a fascinating detail to me.
What they do is, on their return, they have the option to go after things in different ways. So, for instance, back in 2019, they were low in one area. And so because they were low in that area, they went after more opt-in subscribers. And so we ended up with, you know, like 10,000 or 15,000 more subscribers than we had originally, than they originally said that they would have in that year. But I'm more than happy to have them put together an email on how they specifically do it.
Yeah, that'd be great. Even just some quick examples of the work they've done. Because I can think of, you know, if you look at retail, you buy something, you end up on the list, but you don't buy a piece of Bothell to end up on the list. So I'm just, I'm curious how that, yeah. RAMI's got the jokes. Okay, that was, you answered, you asked all my questions, so I'm good there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Manki?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I also appreciate the ROI, the guaranteed ROI that's built in. And anytime we're spending money, especially $400,000, it's good to get data back on your return on investment so you know that you're putting the money in the right place. So I wanted to start with that. Question about the website. Since we're trying to draw traffic and focus traffic there, I'm curious, does Street Sense maintain that? And how often do they go in and update content on it?
I don't specifically know if it's daily. Every time that they're, I ask them to do something, it's done within a day or two. And they're constantly adding in new information. So we have a new business, we'll add that in. If there's a business that's left, we remove it. So we, they're always adding in information. And then they spend quite a bit of time on the development side on the offers page. So that takes quite a bit of technical work on their part to get that up and running. So they're doing all of that. They take care of some of the events. I do some of the other events. So we kind of share, we split some of the responsibility for that.
Okay, I appreciated seeing the events on there. I did go poke around a little bit, since it's probably the most visible thing to us as council members. And I did notice there were a few restaurants that were not included, some that have closed down since and are still on the website. So I wanted to make sure that, you know, if we are to approve this contract tonight, they'll stay on top of those updates to make sure we have the right businesses in there. And the ones that are no longer here are removed from the site. The only other issue I had was, there's a lot of page loading initially when opening it up. And that's something that I think could use some work. It was several seconds, and it should be measured in milliseconds. People don't have the attention span to sit and wait for it. And it's not a knock on anybody, but it's just the expectation, you know, at this point is millisecond load time instead of multiple-second load time. So I'd love to see them get that button down. I suspect it may have to do with all the photos that are on there. And if they're, you know, not stored the proper way, they will take longer to load. So that's my only real comment on that. I love that we have restricted dollars that we can spend on things like this and help drive traffic and help bring people to Bothell for the events that we're doing. I know we've got a big focus on events. So I love that. I love that we're, you know, filling our motel rooms. We have a lot of hotels and motels here, a lot of special experiences like McMinniman's. So I appreciate all the work that you've done on this.
You're welcome, thank you.
Councilmember Alderks?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for this presentation. I really appreciate the questions and comments that have been made so far by other council members. And I guess my main question is, how much, like, sorry, more marketing questions. How much A B testing has been done on, like, messaging or on different kind of ways to frame why come to Bothell? And is that something that is getting iterated on? Or has there, is there like one set sort of message that is part of each contract? I'm actually just really curious to know, like, how does messaging shift and evolve over time as maybe, you know, finding what messaging is most effective?
Well, the user-generated content that we received through a contract with another platform helps us curate a lot of those images that you see on the website that we're constantly updating. And then we use those images for all of our social posts and for the blogs and the e-newsletter. And then we are also constantly in contact with our businesses to find out information that can help us create new and interesting stories and images to tell. So an example of the most recent one was, we did a blog on the hot spicy places to eat in Bothell. So as the weather cools down and you're looking for a way to stay warm, you know, there's, not only can you hoogie it and, you know, and be by a fire, but you can also go to some of the restaurants in town that serve up spicy food. So we're always looking for really unique and unique experiences. And the more that our businesses can provide that information for us, the more that we can just continue to bring in unique stories to the entire website and brand. I hope that answered your question.
A little bit. I think, more broadly speaking, is, I'm thinking more of like the framing used. You know, how are we conceptualizing Bothell? And how are we selling Bothell to visitors? Is probably a much bigger question than we need to discuss tonight. But I'm just curious of how that process is kind of iterated on over time.
I have some information that I would be happy to share with you on that. When Street Sense first began developing the brand and website, they put together an entire packet of information that is the mood and the feel and the look of what it is that we are portraying to the community, and I can share that with you. So I'm happy to do that.
Thank you, I would like that.
Do you want to speak? Yeah, go ahead.
I think also, maybe to Councilmember Alderks' question is, there was a pretty extensive survey about who the target population was that was going to be spending money in Bothell. And a lot of the advertising, as I understand it, is geared to those who are coming into Bothell with an interest of spending money.
We do have a targeted audience that we do all of our marketing or most of our marketing towards, so I can provide that information.
All right, I don't see any other questions. Unless somebody would like to make a motion?
I'd like to move the recommended action.
Second? All right, I've got a motion from Councilmember Zornz and a second from Deputy Mayor Alcabra to approve the professional services contract with Street Sense Consulting for ongoing marketing services beginning January 1, 2023, through December 31, 2024, in the amount of $400,000. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? City Clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zornz?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Councilmember Manki?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Fantastic. All right, we are now moving on to, this time, we're actually moving on to Agenda Bill 22188, consideration of selecting a voting representative for the Sound Cities Association Board Elections North Caucus. City Manager?
And no formal presentation tonight, Mayor. The agenda bill in your packet lays out information that was provided to the City Council by the Sound Cities Association. I will just note that staff is standing by following the selection of your voting representative. Our deputy city clerk will be submitting that individual's name to SCA, and they'll be following up with details for the meeting coming up later this week. With that, I'll turn it over to you.
Fantastic. Is there anybody interested? Councilmember Dodd?
Yeah, I would like to be considered. I haven't had a lot of exposure to SCA yet, and I think it would be an interesting opportunity. It's a good group of people, it would look like, from the information.
Fantastic. Councilmember McNeil?
Yeah, I'd like to throw my name in the hat as well. And it's been an honor serving as an executive board member for SCA and on a couple additional committees that will be brought forward to pick. So super excited about that as well, and looking forward to have an additional Bothell representation as well.
Say what? I was just wondering the same thing. So we have two people that are interested. Is that something where one person needs to make a motion and then we vote? Or do we write it down on a piece of paper? What's the best way to go do that?
Motion and vote.
Okay. I will entertain a motion. Deputy Mayor, your light is on.
I had this one from before, but I don't even know what the motion, how to make. I know how to make a motion.
You would move to appoint somebody to the, as a voting representative for the Sound Cities Association Board Elections North Caucus?
Okay, I move to appoint Amanda Dodd to SCA North Caucus as an elector for the caucus, as a caucus representative for SCA? I don't know, it wasn't written. Is that good enough?
As long as I don't have to repeat it.
Can I second it?
Yes.
All right, I second.
All right, I have a motion on the floor from the deputy mayor, and I have a second from Councilmember Alderks to appoint Amanda Dodd as our voting representative for the North Caucus meeting. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Yep, Councilmember Zornz?
As much as I adore the council members sitting next to me, the next space over has heavy representation and experience for SCA and a lot of built-in relationships that have been built over time. And so I'm going to be supporting Councilmember McNeil.
Good. Councilmember Manki?
More of a question. What is this elected representative there to do specifically? What are they voting on? Is it voting on the board? Is it voting on a policy position? Just curious, I don't know if I can ask that question at this point in the game, but...
Sure. It's a voting on a board member to represent the North Caucus.
I guess specifically to do, to do what at the meeting? What's being voted on at the meeting?
That meeting that we're sending the voting representative to is going to be electing a board member to represent the North Caucus on the SCA. a board member to represent the North Caucus on the SCA board.
Okay. And the, the board members that are up for election are all people from the board, or are they not from the board? Are they from, I guess jurisdictions, or are they already serving in SCA in some capacity?
I believe that there is one person that is going for their seat again, and then there is one open seat.
Okay.
But I do not know that. Councilmember McNeil probably does.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, Councilmember Manki, one of the board members, the, the current president will be the past president from Redmond, and so her seat will be open. Councilmember Wendy Walker from Mercer Island is running for her seat again, and so this, the person who we send there will be working to elect the new board member to fill the seat from, the two seats, North Caucus seats from Mercer Island and Redmond. Redmond not running again because she will become the past board president, so she does not need to run for her seat again, so.
Okay, thank you. That, that's all helpful information. Similar to Councilmember Zornz, I very much respect Councilmember Dodd, and I think, I think she would make good choices. In this particular instance, I will be voting no. I think Councilmember McNeil has been at SCA and been involved in SCA for quite a while. I know that he knows, likely knows or has observed one of those individuals that's running to retain her seat, and I think having that past knowledge and visibility into what that person does and how they operate will be helpful in this instance. If it were, you know, two seats that were up that were brand-new people, and they're people that had not been involved in SCA in the past, I think that it's a much easier choice to make. I mean, there's not, there's not a lot of extra information that you might need, but I think having that experience, having observed this individual that's up for reelection, Councilmember McNeil has that, that knowledge that none of the rest of us have, and so I think that would be helpful in the vote. So for that reason, I'm going to be voting no.
Deputy Mayor?
Oh, you want to go? Yeah.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I also have the utmost confidence in Councilmember Dodd, and as a sitting board member, executive board member for, for SCA, relationship-based, I would hope that I could have the opportunity to go there and elect the next North Caucus member that's going to join the board, but I also would, would hope that Councilmember Dodd would, would join me in, in jumping on some additional boards throughout the next year or few years to ensure that, that we have more representation from Bothell, because currently we don't, there's two of us serving on regional boards, and I'd love to see more of it.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you. I appreciate you, Councilmember McNeil, actually, for all the work you do. And the only reason I picked Councilmember Dodd is because I feel we need, I mean, you've been doing this for, and you're going to be doing this for a while, the SCA thing, and the only reason I asked, I motioned for, just to get more exposure, you know, so that we, that experience can be, with, with your guidance and, you know, I'm hoping, I was assuming that you would guide her through the conversation as well, so that's the, the reason. I appreciate you both to do this. I, I, I mean, we motioned for this, so we'll have to vote and then decide how to do this. And that's, I just wanted to give the reasoning, you know, with all due respect to Councilmember McNeil's position and, and work on this, that's all.
All right. City Clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zornz?
No.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
No.
Councilmember Manki?
No.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Passes four to three with Councilmembers Zornz, McNeil, and Manki, and the negative.
Thank you, City Clerk. All right, moving on to our next agenda item is council conversations. I open the floor.
This is the last conversation for the year, isn't it? Okay, so if you'll humor me a little bit, I'm going to do a little run here. First off, before I get to the big meat, is at the end of the year, I am so grateful that we have our new city manager, Kyle Stannard, and we've got Jason and we've got Tony on board. We're going to hit the 2023 running, so I'm very grateful for wrapping up 2022 for this. And then I had a chance to poke my nose in the new fire station, and it's looking pretty slick, and the firefighters are very excited about it. I can't wait for the ribbon cutting. You'll let us know when that's happening, right? And then I think everyone may have gotten in their, may have received in their mailboxes some letters from students from Inglemore High School, and if you want to reply to them, send it to, the teacher's name is Alex Baker, and if you send, send it to Inglemore High School in care of Alex Baker, you can reply to some of those students. So I haven't done this in a while, and I'm hoping, I keep waiting to see if a council member does this, is a hero, you know, just a shout-out for a hero. And so I'm going to wrap up 2022 with one of my heroes. Her name is Ann Agard, and my husband, decades ago, when he was on city council, he'd come home, and I, and it would be a long night, and I'd say, "So Bruce, how'd it go?" He goes, "Oh, Ann Agard came in, and she had so much testimony, but it was good stuff." And this woman has been doing her homework before the days that you could research things on, on the internet, and she, that woman is a force to be reckoned with. So I called her, I was kind of hoping that she'd say, "My major victory was in daylight in Horse Creek," because I got to be part of that, but, but no, it's, it's not her favorite victory. She moved here in Bothell in 1968 and kind of moved around to several different places. At one point, they owned a house in Maywood that was owned by, had been owned by one of the North Shore's superintendents, so a name that I don't even recognize. Her favorite memory, and it may have crossed, you know, the legal desk and here in our city, was when the Vituli Farmland, you guys know where Vituli is, was going up, and at that time, the city was really bent on turning it into a shopping mall. And Ann said at the time, it just reduced her to tears to see this beautiful farmland, you know, potentially being a, a shopping mall. And at that time, I'm part of this group, it's called SAVE, it's Save Our Valuable Environment. She, Ann thinks it's one of the low, the oldest not-for-profit citizens group still in the state. They hired, fresh out of law school, an attorney to represent them because Snohomish County was fit to be tied. Good neighbors happen with people who live next door to you and across county lines. Snohomish County was fit to be tied because they did not have the infrastructure to support a shopping mall. And so this attorney took it to the State Supreme Court, fresh out of law school, won, and then went off to serve in Washington, DC. But so that's Ann's favorite victory that she remembers. But she told me another interesting, fun fact was back in the days, I think right here somewhere, maybe like right outside here on the plaza where the old city hall stood, city council didn't meet at the back of the building, they met in a little room off to the side, and she said it was like ice cream parlor chairs, and they'd sit in a circle and they'd talk, and this is what I thought we might make note of, is they had to stop at nine o'clock because the fire station down below, the firefighters needed to go to sleep. So I thought, you know, nine o'clock, that would, that would make it a lot more livable. But Ann has been one of those rare souls that can just dive into the meat of details and hold your feet to the fire and have good discussions. And one thing that she told me was that when that shopping center was in discussion, she said you couldn't go through Bothell without meeting some, everyone had an opinion, either for it or against it, and, you know, and, and you would bump into them and they'd be for or against it. She said the one thing that she noticed that happened afterwards that she wishes would return to Bothell is that when the court case was decided and you bumped into those people again in the shop, you know, when you're out in the grocery store, everybody was fine. All was, whatever side you landed on, all was forgiven, and you were neighbors again, and I think that would be a lovely thing to bring back to our, our community. So anyway, Ann Agard is my hero. I really appreciate the way she's made and the way she's wired, and I hope there's more, more of that that grows up in Bothell. Oh, oh, and then the other comment, I'm actually going to leave some room to talk, is when we meet back next year, the days are going to be longer, right? I know, right. So I am done being a one-woman show here, and I'm going to yield the floor to you guys.
Deputy Mayor?
I was going to say, I like the idea of, of ending, setting a, you know, an end, end time for us, and then we can pick it up. That means puts more pressure on not packing the agenda for us, you know? That way, we don't have to stay here till midnight.
Harsh.
You know, I, I like, you know, you talk to people you like like this, so you're, you're tough on them a little bit. No, cool.
Tough out here, easy in executive session, right?
I like an end time, but I don't turn into a pumpkin till 11:00, so I can make it a little past nine. I wanted to shout out, very casually, but I was very impressed. When we left our meeting on the 29th, there was a person on a Lime scooter in the snow, and I loved it. So whoever you are, random person, awesome work, and I hope you did not get a head injury.
Did they have chains?
Not that I noticed.
I love that Ann's biggest win happened in 1978, and she's still coming, giving testimony to us last week. That's pretty cool.
She is a force to be reckoned with, isn't she?
Indeed.
Just wanted to give a final shout-out to staff for all the work you've done this year. It's our final meeting. A lot's gotten done this year, even though we've had vacant executive positions and we've had a lot of acting and interims, just really appreciate all the work that everybody has done, and looking forward to all the work that we're going to do together next year. So thank you for your hard work, and I hope you all have some enjoyable vacations coming up the next couple weeks. I also wanted to say thanks to all of council. It's been a good first year together, and looking forward to the next coming years, and good luck to all that will be running next year.
And that I have foretuned.
I want to give one more thank you to Erin for helping shepherd us through before we got Kyle. Thank you, Erin. We appreciate you.
I would say we should applaud, but I feel like you would hate it, so.
Moving on, we are going to move to executive session pursuant to RCW 4230 110 1G to review the performance of a public employee anticipated to last 30 minutes with no action. We will adjourn at 8:15.